Okay.
All right, I think it's time, so we'll get going here. Let's call this meeting to order. This is the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting for August 10th of 2021. It's 3:00 PM in the afternoon. Remind everybody, this is a special meeting, so we're going to limit our discussion to what's on the agenda. And this is a planning commission meeting, so we won't be discussing any city business or anything like that in this meeting. So let's start out with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't have any elected officers yet, so we don't have an elected secretary. So I'm gonna call on Lynn to do a roll call.
Commissioner Owen.
You had to look and see.
I did, I did.
Here, I'm here.
Commissioner Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Commissioner Dumas.
Here.
And I'm here.
And Commissioner.
So we were all present, so if you could put her forward. I made one change to the agenda as it was posted, and it was only to change the order of new business. We had nomination and election of commission officers third on the, on the agenda. But in order to have an elected secretary to take minutes of the meeting, I thought it would be better for us to do the nomination and election of officers beforehand. So with that change, will I have a motion to approve the agenda? Jerry made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Ken seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. The agenda is approved, we have no minutes, since this is our first meeting. No reports, no standing committee, no special committees, no whole business. So we can move right on to new business. Item number one, review for the public record ordinances 2021-002 and 2021-006, establishing the Holiday Island City Planning Commission. These are ordinances that was passed by, previously passed by the city council. Lynn, you wanna go ahead and do that?
Sure, just a few highlights. Ordinance 21-2 was approved on May 18th, and part of the title says an ordinance establishing the Holiday Island City Planning Commission. There were several sections, in section one, it says that pursuant to Title 14, Chapter 56, Subchapter 4 of the Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated, that we're going to create this planning commission in accordance with the requirements and conditions of that statute. In section two, it says the Holiday Island City Planning Commission shall submit recommendations regarding development and redevelopment policies, general and specific plans, ordinances and regulations to the mayor and council. That's also from the statutes. In section three, it's the appointment of, two methods of appointing the commission members. And it spells in section A, the city council to be named, and in section B, it's a group of five others instead. Section C talks about commissioners must disclose our real estate holdings, our business and financial interests, and any relations by blood or marriage that we may have to other commissioners, as well as any direct financial involvement with them. In section D, it talks about the terms of our appointment, and if we chose the group of five outside of the commission, outside of the city council, would have been commissioners appointed at large from our community. In section E, there's an attendance policy for commissioners, and in section F, it says the commissioners shall serve on the Holiday Island City Planning Commission without compensation. Section four, just details how many meetings we must have, a minimum of one per month. Section five is about the secretarial services, and it says a competent secretary shall be provided by the city, and that secretary shall be under the direction of the city recorder treasurer. And in section six, the commission cannot expend or encumber city funds without the prior appropriation or what's granted to the mayor. So that's it for the summary of O2. And on July 20th, we passed ordinance 2021-06, and its title is an ordinance establishing the members of the Holiday Island City Planning Commission. And the second whereas is the need to ensure the city will in a timely manner adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted harmonious development of the city of Holiday Island and its environs, and the activities associated with urban planning. And the last whereas, the city council has determined that the first city planning commission members would be the Holiday Island City Council. So with that action, we adopted paragraph, the first paragraph A, or section, section 1A, and also the city council shall serve as the Holiday Island zoning board of adjustments. And to be clear, this is not an ad hoc committee, it's not for regular purpose, then what's by statute in the Arkansas law, that we are a city planning commission, and that's how we're conducting our business today. That's my summary, sir.
Okay. Item two, is there, are there any questions or comments on that? I'll move on to item two on the agenda, nomination and election of commission officers. And for the record, we are, I'm automatically the chair of the commission. So we're going to elect a vice chair and a secretary, right?
And I thought we had to pass resolution 21-1 before we did that. The reason I say that is because the statutes don't talk about a secretary, it says other officers that's needed, I believe, or asked to be.
Are you making that as a point of order?
Well, it's a point of discussion on your, on your next step of action.
All right, that takes us a little bit out of order on the agenda, but if there are no objections, we could consider resolution R21-001 first, and then go back to the election.
It sounds like that would be.
Okay, so can I, I would entertain a motion that we place resolution HICPC R21-001 on the floor for consideration.
I'll introduce 21-1 for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, both, all right. Lynn, you wanna read the resolution, I'm gonna call on you to read all the resolutions.
That's fine. Resolution is resolution HICPC R21-1, a resolution establishing the Holiday Island City Planning Commission officers. Whereas the city of Holiday Island has recently created the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, HICPC rather, as permitted by Arkansas Statute ACA 1456404. And whereas the city of Holiday Island has recently appointed the city council to serve as the Holiday Island City Planning Commission as permitted by Arkansas Statute ACA 1456404. And whereas the Arkansas Statute ACA 1456-406 directs the mayor to serve as chair of the HICPC, and for the HICPC to select a vice chair and such other officers as it may require. Now, being resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, that the mayor of Holiday Island shall serve as the chair of the HICPC. The members of the HICPC commissioners shall nominate and elect by roll call vote from among the commissioners for the office of vice chair. The vice chair shall be elected during the first yearly meeting and serve for the duration of the calendar year. The vice chair shall serve multiple, can serve multiple terms. The vice chair shall serve as chair in the absence of the chair during all HICPC meetings. The vice chair shall attest to all approved resolution by his or her signature. I have a problem, I'll keep reading. The commissioners shall nominate and elect by roll call vote among all the commissioners for the office of secretary. The secretary shall be elected during the first yearly meeting and serve for the duration of the calendar year. The secretary can serve multiple terms. The secretary shall serve as a chair in the absence of the chair and the vice chair during all HICPC meetings. The secretary shall attest to all approved resolutions by his or her signature. The secretary shall keep a public record of all business resolutions, transactions, findings, and determinations of the HICPC, passed and approved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Holiday Island, Arkansas, on the date of 8/10/21. And at the very bottom, I have it attested by the secretary that this resolution says the vice chair should attest. So we need to discuss that.
And it also says that the secretary shall attest, so.
Yes, so when I drafted that, I intended for the BP to do it, but then ended up putting secretary on the bottom. I remember changing that, so we need to fix it.
We should scratch the line, the vice chair shall attest to all approved resolution by his or her signature.
Give that some preference.
It's typical for the secretary to.
Or just cross that.
So a line through the vice chair shall attest, okay.
And I will do that before we sign the official copy of this.
Certainly.
Okay. All right, open for discussion.
The secretary we're talking about here is, will also take minutes in that, or what?
Yes, they will take the minutes of the planning commission meeting.
Well, that was the intent with the last sentence, shall keep a public record of all business. So. So someone among us is gonna have to do that.
When we're going down the line, if we start issuing permits and all that kind of stuff, is that the kind of transaction we're talking about, or is that gonna be, is that different?
Say that again.
I'm a little confused as to what the duties are, okay?
The intent with this statute, or this resolution, was to do the secretarial duties to manage what the commission does during its meetings. So, you know, keeping the minutes, keeping track of the resolutions. The transactions has to do with, I think, any actions that we would pass. It wasn't intended to be works of a building department, or an inspector, or a code enforcement, or anything like that.
Okay.
But that wasn't intended for any of that.
That was what I wanted.
Yeah.
Well, further to that question, who is, who would, who would give out the building permit?
The building inspector.
Maybe just go to him directly.
Well.
We have to pass that by ordinance.
We have to pass that by ordinance, but.
That's part of the vision.
But, you know, in the.
Oh, we're doing the.
This is a little off subject, but the, in the, in the building code that we're in the process of developing, included in that, I created a flow chart that shows that if someone wants a building permit, they have to go to the planning commission first to make sure that, you know, declare it, to make sure it doesn't violate any zoning ordinances or anything like that. And then they would go to the building inspector for a technical review of plans and stuff like that. The building inspector feels that everything is in accordance with the building laws, then they would issue building permits. And then they would go to the city treasurer to pay their, their fees, and the treasurer would stamp the building permit, which would make it official.
So this body, right here, would be having people come in proposing to do something or other, and we would listen to their plan? Well, that would be kind of part of the business of the meeting.
Or, and/or transactions.
Or transactions.
Yeah.
I guess my, my first question is, does anybody want to do this? He does. Which one?
And that makes it real easy, which one?
Yeah, which one?
Which one? Well, if we pass this, then we'll talk about that for nominations, so.
Okay.
All right, I make the motion, we pass the resolution as a.
I'll second.
I'll answer me.
Is there any other discussion? Will we all do a roll call vote?
Yes, I think so.
All right, you wanna take the roll call vote?
Commissioner Keys.
Yes.
Commissioner Oldwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Bev.
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 Whatever.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Graves.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas, yes.
All right, the resolution passed us as amended, and now we can go to election of officers. And now, the resolution says a vice chair and other officers as.
As may, may require.
As may require, but since.
And we put that may require to be the secretary.
Yeah, the secretary. So we're looking for two candidates, or two, two people to take positions. I'll, we'll consider the vice chair position first.
Can it not be the same?
I don't think they can.
No, because the, the secretary has to replace the vice chair in his absence of the mayor.
If they were all three.
They'd be signing a testament to the same.
It will never happen in our commission, because the three missing is not a quorum, so we wouldn't have to say it.
All right, we're looking for.
The commission might be six or seven in the future, so.
I don't know, as chair, if I'm allowed to make a nomination, but.
I think you are.
I nominate Lynn to be the vice chair. He has done 99% of the work on this up until now.
You don't need to campaign.
Well, I don't know, that means there's four of you old enough.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
All right.
I thought I'd be more effective as a secretary.
I did, dude.
My opinion was I'd be more effective as a secretary.
But you don't wanna be vice chair?
I respectfully decline nomination.
All right.
I say give it whatever you want.
That makes it a lot easier. All right, now I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Oh, are we gonna do all the nominations first?
No, we'll do the vice chair first, and then, and then nominate Lynn for secretary. Who wants to be vice chair?
Who will be? It's only one of the chairs missing, but the only duty you have is to serve as chairman of the meeting in his absence.
I'll do it.
All right.
There you go. I'll second that nomination.
All right, Jerry.
Jerry nominated.
Jerry nominated himself to be vice chair. All right, Pat nominates Jerry to be vice chair.
I'll second.
And Lynn has seconded it, any other nominations? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Keys.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Oldwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Graves.
Aye.
Commissioner Dumas, aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Now I'll open the floor to, for nominations for secretary.
I'll be watching, so.
I'll nominate Lynn.
Pat nominates Lynn. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Jerry seconds. Any other nominations? Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Keys.
Yes.
Commissioner Oldwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Graves.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas, yes.
All right, we have our officers. Now we can move on to resolution number R21-002. With the secretary, oh, first of all, I need a motion to place that on the floor for consideration. We're back, we're back on the agenda to, we're in the second step of number three.
I move that we put for resolution 21-2 on the floor for discussion.
What, what, it says what? It said after the nomination, it says approve resolutions for public cases.
Okay, I got it, okay. All right, hit me.
All right, Lynn, move to place resolution R21-002 on the floor for consideration, do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. All right, Lynn, you wanna read it?
HICPC resolution 21-002. The resolution establishing the location and scheduled time of Holiday Island City Planning Commission meetings. Whereas the city of Holiday Island has recently created the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, that will be holding regular meetings. And whereas the Arkansas Statute 1456407 directs the HICPC to provide at least one regular meeting each quarter of the year. And whereas the city budget provides for the city of Holiday Island to contract with the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, the district for office space and administrative assistance. And whereas the district has included in the contract in their 2021 operating budget. And whereas in order to comply with the Freedom of Information Act, the public must be notified of the scheduled regular meetings, as well as two hour notifications of special meetings being given to these members of the public and media that have requested such notification. Now, being resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission that the regular meetings of HICPC shall be held on the second Tuesday of each month at 3:00 PM in the boardroom of the district office at 110 Woodstale Drive, Holiday Island, Arkansas. Every attempt will be made to publish the agenda for a regular meeting two business days prior to the meeting. Special meetings can be scheduled by the HICPC chairman as necessary with the proper two hour notification to those members of the public and press that have requested notification. Public notification of meetings will be made in a manner similar to the method used by the city council of Holiday Island and with assistance from the district. If circumstances beyond the control of the HICPC chairman or commission prevent in-person meetings at said location with a minimum of two hour notification, meetings can be moved to another location or be conducted via internet using Zoom or another suitable application. This resolution will remain in effect until such a time as the location or method of notifications are revised by a resolution of the HICPC or established by ordinance in the city municipal code, passed and approved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date, 8/10/21.
Okay, any discussion on this resolution?
I didn't know if we approved a resolution in R21-002.
Can I make a motion to approve the resolution, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn has seconded it. Any further discussion?
Just, just one question, was there any thought of having the meeting leading up to the city council meeting, the same thing? Would we benefit from that?
The thought I put into writing it was, having this, the few days before the regular meeting would give time for any proposed resolutions or ordinances that the planning commission might have. Make sure all that communication takes place, be in time and be on the city council agenda, issues like that.
And yeah, there are times, there are going to be times when somebody wants to do something, in Holiday Island here, that needs a variance from a, an ordinance, or the building code, or something like that. And, you know, those meetings could go on, you know, for some time, so I don't think I'd wanna. I don't, I wouldn't wanna put us under a time constraint because we'd be doing back-to-back meetings.
These are, yeah, these are fairly similar to the original ones, to the regulations.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Keys.
Yes.
Commissioner Oldwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Graves.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas, aye.
Okay, this resolution is passed. All right, resolution R21-003, a resolution establishing the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting and voting rules, do I have a motion to place this on the floor for consideration?
I'll move to place 21-03 on the floor for discussion.
All right, Lynn made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn has seconded it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Lynn, if you would read that one.
HICPC R21-003. A resolution establishing the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting and voting rules. Whereas the city of Holiday Island has recently created the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, as permitted by Arkansas Statute ACA 1456404. And whereas the Arkansas Statute 1456408 requires that the HICPC shall adapt rules, excuse me, adopt rules and regulations to conduct its business as required. And whereas the Arkansas Statute ACA 1456422 requires that all plans recommended, recommended ordinances and regulations shall be adopted through a specific procedure. Now, being resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, that the HICPC shall establish the following rules to conduct its business. The chair shall make necessary additions and corrections to the normal agenda for each HICPC meeting and public hearing. Resolutions may be prepared and presented for consideration by all members of the HICPC. All provisions, ordinances and regulations created for recommendation to the city council shall be approved through the resolution process during a public hearing. All resolutions shall be approved by a majority of the members of the HICPC by a roll call vote, not simply a majority of the quorum present. The chair shall vote on all roll call votes. All presentations for public and private proposals under ACA 1456412, section F1, must be submitted no less than seven calendar days before any special meeting. All proposals under ACA 1456412, section F1, will be considered after presentation to the HICPC for less than 10 calendar days for compliance with plans for the area, ordinances and regulations. All presentations of proposals under 1456412, section F1, that have been considered regarding the city plan, ordinances and regulations shall be presented in a public hearing before being approved or disapproved by a roll call vote of majority of the members of the HICPC. Proposals disapproved by the HICPC shall be referred to the city council for review at the next scheduled meeting of the city council. Passed and approved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date, 8/10/21.
Okay, any questions or comments on this resolution?
I recall that, nine, proposals disapproved by the planning commission shall be reviewed since the city council planning commission are wanting to say anything.
No, they're, we are separate. We are separate groups. It creates, it creates that, the issue of gee, we're doing it one time and doing it again. It, it, it creates an opportunity for someone bringing a presentation to have their objection heard publicly again.
Well, what if they not, what if they accept the recommendation of the planning commission, or they all ask to get the review?
The city planning commission, if they approve the plans, there's no problem. Just as if they re, if they just, if they have a problem with the ones that are disapproved.
They. Well, I understand that, but I, why would we review them if, if, if there's not a request by the person making them? I mean, I guess we assume that they're gonna want us to, as sitting in as a council to.
I'm not sure, I don't understand your question.
He's asking, he said, should they not want to have it?
Should they file an appeal?
If they file, if they file appeal, that'd be proposals disapproved, they would appeal that decision of the planning commission, and that appeal would go to the city council.
It doesn't say appeal, it just automatically.
Yeah, that's my question.
Oh, I see, okay, I understand, okay, make it by appeal, yes. Okay, proposals disapproved by the HICPC, comma, okay, or appeals, I would spell that.
And appeal.
And appeal, there we go, I understand your problem.
And appeal, that would work.
And appeal?
Yeah, I love it, HICPC and appeal shall be referred to the city council.
Again, yep.
Hopefully, always be.
It wasn't the assumption that everything that was disapproved, those sort of were due. It was, that's what I thought was my idea.
Good question.
Excellent.
Makes sense.
Did, did you change this, because this is not the one, the version I had posted on the website, but.
Right, right, this was sent out yesterday morning. Okay.
Okay.
What I did was, in the version that was posted.
I added the third where is, and I added, the steps seven, eight, and nine changed a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
And I added a couple hyphens and roll call. All right, the version that was posted was different.
All right, any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move to approve.
Lynn, I've moved to approve resolution HICPC R21-002. Linda, move to approve Resolution HICPC R21-003. As amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry, seconded it. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Oldwood?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Dimas?
Aye.
They have approved, as amended, we'll make the corrections before we sign the original. All right, moving on to Resolution HICPC R21-004. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission meeting standard agenda. Do I have a motion to put this on the floor for consideration?
I'll move that we put 21-4 on the floor for discussion.
I'll second.
Second.
Jerry seconded. Didn't mean to wake you all up.
Neil, two seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the I say it. Linda, can you read the resolution?
HICPC R21-004. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission meeting standard agenda. Whereas the city of Holley Island has recently created the Holley Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, as permitted by Arkansas statute 1456-404. And whereas the city of Holley Island has recently appointed the city council to serve as the Holley Island City Planning Commission, as permitted by Arkansas statute ACA 1456-408, requires that the HICPC shall adopt rules and regulations to conduct its business as required. Now being resolved by the Holley Island City Planning Commission that the following agenda format be followed for all regular HICPC meetings. The agenda format for special meetings will be similar but can be adjusted as necessary. The chair or his, her, designated meeting is responsible for preparing the agenda and distributing to the HICPC members for review prior to the meeting and will be posted as a public notification for HICPC meetings. Passed and approved by Holley Island City Planning Commission, Holley Island, Arkansas, this date, 8/10/21.
Any discussion on, well, attached to it is the agenda.
Yes, the second page is the agenda.
Just the standard agenda format.
The only question I had after drafting this, I put conference room because that's my forty years of history. Is this a boardroom or conference room? Is that important? The reason I ask that question is because someone called me that knows where we meet and asked me, is this the boardroom?
I think it's a boardroom.
It's kind of known as the boardroom.
Okay, I'm not a long time Holley Island owner, so I don't have it. I call it a conference. I'll make it a boardroom.
I think it's normally referred to the boardroom because the board of commissioners meets here.
Okay.
The conference room used to be the mayor's office.
Okay. Okay, I'll suggest that we change it to boardroom.
Any other comments? That would constitute, I guess, a revision to the resolution as presented, so if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we pass the HICPC R21-004 as amended.
Make a motion, we approve HICPC R21-04 as amended.
Ken made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Oldwood?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Dimas?
Aye.
All right, this one passed. So I can put that in the file to be corrected. Moving on to HICPC R21-005. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission purchasing policy. Do I have a motion to place this one on the floor for consideration?
I move that we put R21-5 on the floor for discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ten seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you read the resolution, please?
HICPC R21-005. A resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission purchasing policy. Whereas the city of Holley Island has recently created the Holley Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, as permitted by Arkansas statute ACA 1456-404. And whereas the Arkansas statute ACA 1456-408 requires the HICPC, HICPC shall adopt rules and regulations to conduct its business as required. Now being resolved by the Holley Island City Planning Commission that the chair of the HICPC has exclusive authority to make purchases requiring expenditures of public funds as have been previously budgeted by the Holley Island City Council. The HICPC is not permitted to enter into contracts requiring expenditures of public funding funds unless previously approved by the Holley Island City Council. Passed and approved by Holley Island City Planning Commission, Holley Island, Arkansas, this date, 8/10/21.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah. When, is the planning commission going to have a separate budget and funds? Or is it going to be integrated into the general, the operating funds of the city act?
It is a commission, so it will have a standalone budget that will be approved by the city council and included in the city budget.
So they will have a separate, and they will be rolled into the general funds, or what is that? Even right now, we have two funds. We got street fund and general.
Right. Yes, they will have to be part of the general. I'm not, I'm not sure how else we set it up in the accounting system. But they will have their own, be like a department.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was my question. I didn't, because that item has a food authority to make purchases, and previously budgeted by the council, and that is that, so we're talking about line item type budget. You're not that emotional yet.
As, as we start to develop ordinances like the building code, which will have the, the main source of revenue for the planning commission is basically going to be building permits and fines, I suppose. As we pass ordinances establishing what those, what that permitting process is and what fee will be, and we will have to consider the accounting process for that. Are those, are those fees going to go into the general fund and then budgeted back to the planning commission? Are they going to be gradually deposited into the planning commission?
I don't see that we'll get to the point where the planning commission would be able to be self-sustaining, so I don't think it would be a...
The city clerk would cut you checks for your expenditure, wouldn't he?
Wouldn't he?
Will the city clerk still cut checks for their expenditure?
I would think so. We're trying to figure the symbol as possible. But I can also see where, you know, this commission is going to have to spend a little bit of money because we have to have, we have to have zoning maps, we have to have area planning maps.
We have to pay for publications and notifications. They'll be significant, huge.
Unless we, can sweet up GIS and to make them maps for us, which they've been pretty good about up until now, but... Okay, any other discussion on the resolution?
Make a motion to approve HICPC R21-5.
Ken made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Pat seconded it. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Oldwood?
Aye.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Dimas?
Aye.
Resolution passed. All right, next on the agenda, Resolution HICPC R21-006. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission record retention procedure. Do I have a motion to put this on the floor for consideration?
I'll move that we put R21-6 on the floor for discussion.
I'll second.
Linda seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you read the resolution?
HICPC R21-006. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission record retention procedure. Whereas the city of Holley Island has recently created the Holley Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, as permitted by Arkansas statute ACA 1456-404. And whereas there are specific requirements for record retention set forth in Arkansas ACA 1456-4-2-201 through, says 104. Now being resolved by the Holley Island City Planning Commission that the HICPC deputy secretary will be responsible for establishing minutes and audio recordings of all the HICPC meetings. The HICPC secretary will submit HICPC records to the city of Holley Island recorder treasurer, who shall retain and copy records in accordance with ACA annotated 14-2-201 through 204, with specific attention to records, the record retention requirements set forth in 14-2-204 as follows and modified for HICPC purposes. Section B, cities of the first-class cities and second-class and incorporated towns may by ordinance declare a policy of record retention and disposal provided that, one, the city or town complies with any specific statute regarding municipal records, and, two, the following records are maintained permanently in either the original or electronic formats required by law. A, the HICPC recommended ordinances. B, the HICPC minutes. C, the HICPC resolutions. D, HICPC proposals for development. Records will also be maintained and made available upon request for ACA annotated 25-19101 through 25-19110, the Freedom of Information Act. All HICPC members must be familiar with the Freedom of Information Act and will be responsible for retaining and producing documents and records as described in the law. Passed and approved by the Holley Island City Planning Commission, Holley Island, Arkansas, this date, 8/10/21.
All right, the second whereas of this should be 204?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be one. One mention. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Yes, I'm listening.
Oh. Do you agree with, agree with me?
I'll second.
All right, Linda, was that...
It was, it was on 04, right there.
Jerry Pittman made the approval. Jerry made the, the motion to approve, and Pat seconded it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Well, I should say the resolution, HICPC R21-006, has been moved and seconded as amended to reflect 204 instead of 104. Roll call vote.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Oldwood?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Dimas?
Aye.
Resolution passed. You don't know how hard it is for me to say here when you're calling.
Well, that's why you're first, sir.
That's what politicians do when they don't want to take the stand on something. They won't present. All right, moving on, HICPC R21-007. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission website usage.
I move that we put R21-7 on the floor for discussion.
Ken made a motion. Do I have a second?
Linda made the motion.
Linda made one.
I'll second it.
I seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
How about I read it? How about you? Oh, never mind. I'm sorry. Aye.
I know we're moving a little fast.
I'm sorry. Sure we won't be seconded here? I'm sorry. Okay, I'll say it the fifth time. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, read the resolution.
HICPC R21-7. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission website usage. Whereas the city of Holley Island has recently created the Holley Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, as permitted by Arkansas statute ACA 1456-404. And whereas the HICPC is committed to handling its affairs in the most transparent manner so that the citizens of Holley Island may be fully informed of the workings of their city government and actions of their city officials and commissions. And whereas the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act of 1967 and subsequent amendments codified in ACA 25-19101 through 111 guarantees public access to public meetings and public records. And whereas creation and maintenance of the city of Holley Island website has enabled the public to gain knowledge, understanding, and access to the public documents of the city. And whereas the HICPC needs a similar method to share its public documents. Now being resolved by the Holley Island City Planning Commission that the HICPC secretary will submit information and documents to be posted on the city's official website, wwwcityofholleyisland.com, in a manner that clearly identifies the HICPC content. Passed and approved by the Holley Island City Planning Commission, Holley Island, Arkansas, this date, 8/10/21.
Okay, as a matter of discussion, Linda, I assume you talked about this and there's a place for this on the website?
Yeah, I restructured the menu just a little bit in creating a new menu item called, I just call it planning.
I think, I think so. Either city planning or...
Yeah, something, I think they call it planning commission.
Yes, you put that in there.
No, it's not. We wanted to have the resolution passed first.
Want to be sure that you folks want to approve it to be on that website rather than a website of its own.
So, you know, for now, that's certainly the easiest way to do it.
I think, you know, the other websites, city websites, I haven't had it all where we're going.
This would have, did I say four, four dropdowns?
I think it would be four lines, if not five.
Four or five dropdowns. One would be meetings and minutes. One would be documents. One would be resolutions or government or something. And something else.
Maybe even our contacts.
Whatever.
Probably our contacts.
Maybe we ought to put contacts.
Should we also add to the, our services, what we provide, purchase, what has to be done?
That might be a good thing. We could update that page, too.
I thought that was always...
Have a discussion about the planning commission and what the planning commission is.
Oh, on services, on the website.
On the website.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
Good idea.
Not, not for content and drop-in, being conditioned under that.
Yeah, well, that is another service.
You just talked about ending the website under services, where we have the water and the streets and something about city planning.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
All right. Okay, any other discussion about the resolution as presented?
Make a motion, we approve the HICPC R21-007.
Ken made a motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Oldwood?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Dimas?
Yes.
Moving on to the last resolution. Resolution HICPC R21-008. Resolution establishing the Holley Island City Planning Commission a Freedom of Information Act policy. Do I have a motion to...
I move that we put R21-08 on the floor for discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Linda, would you read it?
HICPC R21-008. Resolution establishing this Holley Island City Planning Commission a Freedom of Information Act policy. Whereas the city of Holley Island has recently created the Holley Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, as permitted by Arkansas statute ACA 1456-404. And whereas the HICPC is committed to handling its affairs in the most transparent manner so that the citizens of Holley Island may be fully informed of the workings of their city government and actions of their city officials and commissions. And whereas the Arkansas, whereas the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act of 1967 and its subsequent amendments codified in ACA 25-19101 through 111 guarantees public access... codified in ACA twenty five nineteen one oh one through one eleven guarantees public access to public meetings and public records, and whereas the publication of the city of Holliday Island FOIA policy on the city's website will assist the public in gaining knowledge and understanding of the city's FOIA policy and how to obtain access to the public documents of the HICPC. Now, be resolved by the Holliday Island City Planning Commission that the HICPC shall adopt the city of Holliday Island Freedom of Information Act policy in FOIA request form, as available on the city's official website name, wwwcityofhollidayisland.com. Passed and approved by the Holliday Island City Planning Commission, Holliday Island, Arkansas, on this date, eight ten twenty one.
Any discussion on this resolution?
Make a motion, we approve, HICPC R twenty one dash eight.
Ken made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda made, uh, seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Vote, call, vote.
Commissioner Peace?
Yes.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner Graves?
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Okay. That's all of the resolutions. Now we can move on to public comments. We have one member of the public.
We have two.
Oh, we have two, yeah, I need to smack in.
Oh, do they have comments?
Yes.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Did you find this interesting and informative?
Yes.
If not slightly comical?
A little bit entertaining.
Alright, uh, Commissioner comments?
Did you have comments?
Okay. Okay. Commissioner comments?
You and Lynn attended a meeting with the, the existing planning commission, could you give us a summary of that?
The, the most recent meeting?
Yeah.
It was strictly conducting business, they, they had three, I think.
Yeah, three proposals for all those.
Of course, you know, understanding that the current planning commission also issues building permits. So, what they were basically doing was reviewing building permit information. Although one, one guy was looking for a easement variance because he was, he owns two lots side by side, and he wanted to extend his patio that would have been only six feet from the property line.
And it was going to encroach into the utility easement as well, I think.
Yeah.
But, but. We were there just to see what they did, I documented their steps and what they went through, just to get an idea of what process might be in place. That, that was my first for attending.
What did they charge for a building permit?
One hundred dollars. For a bad damn.
If it's a.
For any kind of building?
If it's new construction, that's twenty four dollars per hundred square feet of heated. Uh, it says heated living space, but then it says not exclusive of decks, patios, and stuff like that. So it seems like it's heated floor space plus your patio and your garage and everything, so. If, for an average size house, it's probably, I don't know. Four, five hundred dollars, about that. So.
Where do we go from here? We need to get busy with, uh, getting the planning area map, the street map, and, uh, what other map it is. There's three maps that we're required to create.
One, one of the, one of the big issues, I mean, with the existing planning missions, you know, is what happens to all of the documents that they got out there? Are we going to make?
We, we don't know yet, but they'll have to tell us what we're going to get, because technically, I, you know, that, all those documents belong to that planning commission or the executor, the developer. And, uh, so, if, if we get any of it, it's going to have to be because they've decided to give it to us.
Are they under FOIA?
No.
They're not? They don't have that.
And quite frankly, there's probably a lot of history in there, and it may be good to know stuff, but mostly what they were going to, when they, when, 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 uh, when they were reviewing somebody's request, and they went to the file cabinet and pulled the file out for that parcel or that property, mostly what they were looking at was the plot map. All the plot maps are on the ICA website, so, you know, I don't know what.
Oh, they weren't looking at their survey map or anything for their property?
I think if you asked those guys, they'd say that it's, that's, that it's a fairly rare occasion where they absolutely need something that's in those files, or, or where it's really, really good to have the stuff that's in those files. It's a lot of history, but, you know, moving forward, I'm not, I'm not so sure that it would.
I mean, that's not a discussion.
Well, I would see that, to their benefit is, uh, they were to be sued for something that happened on a development that was not permitted, and they would have proof that they permitted or denied it, but I saw that as they're going to, but not much for us moving forward.
No, no, not much benefit to us?
I don't, I don't see where it's at.
Uh, I thought, you know, the main thing was the building, building specifications for, you know, homes that they approved or something.
Dan, he had his hand up.
Sorry, I just had a question, I don't know, did you move over a fee schedule from the old planning commission to the new one, this one? Or you didn't have one before?
We, we, we haven't actually even gotten that far yet.
Okay.
We're, we're writing our building code as we speak, but as Lynn was describing, um, before we can even pass any, a building code, we have to have a, a planning area map, that's, that's number one, right?
Yes, number one's a planning area map.
You, you have to have that before you can do anything else. Then you have to have a street map, and, uh, you have to have a zoning map.
Yeah, the land use plan, which would be the zoning.
Yeah.
And the community facilities plan.
So, if you're wondering what's next for the planning commission, that's it, those items.
And then the.
And then we can start.
Or you're making a fee schedule a part of the building, uh?
The fee schedule would be part of the building code.
Okay.
But the building code is under title nine in the municipal code, I believe. The planning commission's under title eleven.
I don't know.
Thirteen, fif- there, there are totally different sections of the, of the municipal code. So, the planning commission won't be issuing building permits and all that kind of stuff. Planning commission will be deciding more, if, if somebody wants to, uh, wants a variance to a zone, to a zoning ordinance, let's say, they, they want a lot in an R one residential area, and they want to put in a coffee shop. So they're asking for a variance to re, rezone to R, to C one. The, the planning commission would consider that, but other than that, um, you know, the planning commission would be looking at more big picture things like, you know, do we ever think we're going to have a school out here, and so, where would it be? And, uh, you know, are all the public facilities in the right place, and, uh, you know? Right now, there is no plan for that, you know, if somebody, you know, we did, if, if we, if we think we need some of that stuff, we may have to have a land acquisition plan for the city to, to bring in some surrounding property just to provide room. Because there's really very little undeveloped property in Holliday Island to do any kind of municipal or public facility construction. So that's the kind of long-term thinking that the planning commission is going to do. Now, what, what is, what's Holliday Island going to look like five years down the road, ten years, twenty-five years? I want to make sure that we get that right.
Well, I have a ten, not twenty-five. It's always, it's always subject to change, you know? The Fayetteville has a forty-year plan for it.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Any, anybody that's been into long-range planning knows that the further out the plan gets, the more fuzzy it is, but if you don't have some vision of what, of where you're going.
Well, right, right now, this is, there is no plan.
Right.
Uh, it's, uh, you, just the individual covenants is telling you restrictions that there are, and, uh, there are several parcels out here that, uh, or I don't have no definition whatsoever what they can.
And that's something that, that.
That's our planning area map, and the zoning will accomplish, it'll put some restrictions on that.
Yeah.
You should think about that.
You what?
You need to think about something like that.
Oh, we are.
We, we are, and it'll be, it'll be a subject of a public, uh, before it's approved.
Talking about being worried about what's going to be your twenty-five years.
Okay, um.
They'll be here before we know it.
Yeah.
We will be here, they will be here.
Alright, we, we know what our next regular meetings are going to be, we just have the resolution. Uh, the third.
The second Tuesday of next month.
Second Tuesday or third, I don't know.
Second.
Second Tuesday.
At three.
At three o'clock. All you guys will self-continue your data. Any other, uh, comments? When we entertain a motion, we adjourn. Make a motion, we adjourn. Ken made a motion, we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Linda seconded, any discussion? On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?